Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight, Thursday, May 19th, 2022. I call our meeting to order, and I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The Republic.
Which stands. One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda, Andy or any other fellow select people?
No, I just know it's the flavor of the Board of Selectmen to try to keep on task tonight and try to have a timely meeting versus a three-hour meeting. I've been directed to try to keep it on task.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Our next section is our public comment. This is the section of the agenda which is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type "comment" in the comment box, and you will be recognized. Good day, sir.
Good evening. Terry McManus, 169 North Street. Can people hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate the Board of Selectmen and Andy, you and your staff, for the passage of the budget. I think it was an extraordinary amount of work that everyone put into it this year. And as always, I'm continually learning more about how the city is run or the town is run. And this year proved to be the same. One of the things that I wanted to comment on, you know, Andy, I guess we won it by two votes?
Yes.
So that's basically if we had about 14% of the town eligible to vote voted. So essentially, 7% of the people voted against it. And I voted against it, by the way. I'm just a stingy guy, and I'm tired of having taxes go up. I'm grumpy, and I'm always learning. But I got to thinking about things. There was a Facebook discussion that went on prior, the week prior, pretty lively at different times. And I thought it was pretty good that the participation that we sometimes bemoan not happening in these meetings is actually happening out in the town, the virtual community. That coupled with, Andy, with your continued improvement in communications, the mailers and the town letters that you're sending out, it got me to thinking. We had 7% vote against this budget. Reality, we had 93% vote for it. And the reason I say that is because, the reason I participate is I'm watching my pennies. I'm interested in it because we live on a fixed income in our household. And with increased percentage of the taxes, that means a bigger bite out of our budget. But that's what called me in onto what I want to say. It was a revelation for me. People vote their pocketbooks an awful lot. There's been others, big politics talking about that, some catchy phrases. But if people were voting, we only had 14% come and vote. But really, the 86% that didn't vote are pretty satisfied. And that's because of your hard work. And I just wanted to thank you and say that I appreciate it. Anyways, that's all I've got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I would like to just make one public comment myself, and that is I want to congratulate the Town Center Project people for a wonderful event that was held over last weekend. A lot of participants, a lot of people in downtown Hebron. It looked to be a great, fun day. Thank you. Thank you to the organizers and the people that worked to make that such a success. Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Tiffany?
Hi, so I'm speaking a little lower because of the arthritis. Yep, this is Tiffany.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to make a, yeah, it's okay. I just wanted to make a brief comment and just, I was wondering if we could take a moment and reflect on the victims of the recent Buffalo mass shooting, which was a terrible tragedy over this past weekend. My heart's heavy thinking about it, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the victims and the victims' families. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have our Good to Know Special Recognition. Andy?
Yes, under Good to Know, the two items that are coming up is, one is the Raymond Brook Preserve. It's a grand opening. It's this Saturday, June 4th at 9:00 a.m. For any of the selectmen that can join that. It's the Raymond Brook Preserve Bridge. Let's just join us. We officially opened the completed Raymond Brook Preserve hiking trails. Event will commence at the bridge site on Millstream section of the preserve. Stick around afterwards to enjoy the trails discussion, future projects. All visitors will be given a token to hand in at the June 4th Farmers Market for a small gift. And then next up, in concert with that, Hebron is starting to have these busy weekends. It will be the Hebrens or the farmers in our Tijian Market, Saturday, 6:04 and 6:18, which is also Hebron Day Summer Kickoff at Burnhill Park. And I think the rest of the dates are 7:02, 7:23, 8:06, and 8:20 at the Hebron Elementary School. So if you could attend or support that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, Donna. So this is the award the town of Hebron got for doing the energy project. In 2021, we were picked out of multiple projects through the contractor. We used ECS Environmental Systems Corporation. And after, we did some of the retrofits going green, the town hall, the library, I believe, the parks, and maybe something at the fire station. I can't remember. So much going on. But it's nice that we got recognized and we were chosen by Eversource for our project that we did. So that's a commitment to us, and kudos to the Green Committee for all their hard work and supporting us in moving forward, and we want to continue to do that. So I think that plaque just came in today, so I didn't see that. So thank you, Donna. Next up, if we're good with that, would be appointments and resignations. We have two for the Green Committee. And I see Caitlin has joined us, which is good. I did call and ask her which one was going to be the, or what she's recommending to be the full-time position and then the alternate. So Caitlin, maybe you can refresh my memory or the Board of Selectmen on the first one, which would be the regular member?
Denise is going to be, she applied as the full-time regular member, and Brian has applied to be the alternate.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to hear it from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So, well, without further ado, we have two people that have expressed interest in being appointed to the Green Committee, Brian Barlow and Denise Rhodes, Rhodesovich? Is that anywhere near ballpark close?
It was a good try, Rhodesovich.
Okay. And there are two vacancies. So the first is the motion that we move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Denise as a regular member to the Green Committee for a term to run until 2023. Denise, did you want to say anything?
Other than I appreciate you considering me for the appointment, the work of the Green Committee is something I really care about as I care about the town. And I hope that I can put whatever talents, intelligence, and skill I may have to do well for everybody.
Okay, well, thank you. Hearing the motion, does anybody have any questions of Denise? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Denise, I'll quit, as a regular member? Please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Our next one is to move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Brian Barlow as an alternate member to the Green Committee to run until 2023. Brian, I believe you are on. I thought I saw him on.
He was on now, it says he's offline.
Oh, okay. Well.
There he is.
I'm not, don't have it on.
I think he's trying to call in.
Oh, okay. We'll give him a second.
Are you there, Brian?
Yep, I'm here. I was having some network trouble.
Did you want to say anything?
Yeah. Apparently we're having. Get the tires out of the. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, Brian, we're just, just can't understand. The audio or something is off. But thank you for.
Hi, just for him, Dan?
Sure.
I want to speak both to Brian and Denise quickly. Brian, we actually met recently through Earth Day Projects. He was the one who pulled all those tires out of Raymond Brook Preserve. I think there are probably a couple dozen by the end of it. Kevin and his team at Department of Public Works were actually gracious enough to go pick all of those up for us. So we're really excited to be working with Brian because he's already put some manpower behind the Green Committee. And then Denise, we've actually known for several years, even pre-COVID, we worked on some projects with her, and we finally got her, finally got her on board. But she's a great legal eagle, real attention to detail. It's just amazing to have her on. So we're really excited about both of them.
Okay, great. Well, the members have heard the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Welcome aboard, both of you. Thank you very, very much for wishing to volunteer and help our great town. So thank you. Our next thing is the Town Manager's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first up, as you can probably be well aware, I'm working with the new planner, bringing up the speeds, introducing them to the people, the projects, and the committees. So that's been taking up a lot of my time and his. We're going to be going out, placing ads for some new hires. We're going to be looking for a new assessor. We're going to be looking for a financial administrator, and we're also going to be looking for a deputy fire marshal. So those three things will be being posted probably next week. We've been meeting with ESC regarding the EV charging stations and the locations and to see what we can do with leveraging the grant monies there. That's ongoing. I had a meeting with the Wyndham Chamber regarding the Maple Fest for next year. Moving forward, there's going to be a post-Mapple Fest meeting with the committee, which involves the sugar houses and the entities and the town departments that are involved in that. That will take place in early June. We had an EDC breakfast over at the Douglas Library in a meeting room with Kathy Austin, Senator Kathy Austin, going over the budget, the state budget that recently just got passed. I've been working with the engineer on the Wall Street sidewalks. We have a boring contractor that's going to be going out there and doing some test borings. We're still dealing with DOT and permitting, but that's moving forward just to keep people abreast of that project. As you'll see later on in this agenda, we are in need of a new roll-off truck. The present truck is very tired and is going to leave us hanging. So we needed to do an emergency purchase. It was really tough to even find a truck, but it took a lot of time and effort to do that. So we'll be visiting that later on in the agenda, but I spent a lot of time in the last week or so working on that. And then, of course, we're closing out the fiscal year. The Board of Finance is going to have the auditors come in at their, not the next meeting this month, but in June. They give them some guidance on what they're looking for for next year's audit and to go over the findings of this year's audit. So been working with Elaine and the Finance Department and all the department heads to close out POs so we can see where we are for, at the end of this year and how we finish up. So that's what we've been up to in the Town Manager's Office. The only other thing is the Memorial Day Parade is on Monday. It starts off at Ram. The selectmen are invited, any selectman that wants to attend or march. They set up around 10 o'clock at Ram, but it steps off promptly at 11:00. So I just wanted to make sure that was aware for anybody that wants to participate in that. And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Our next would be our old business, and first would be the acquisition of the Raymond property?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Board of Selectmen approved the acquisition of the 8.5-acre Raymond property on Millstream Road on January 21st, 2021, with plans to send a future, to send to a future special town meeting. Finally, all the Raymond family members have now signed a sales agreement. Two steps remain to be completed before the special town meeting. That first one would be an 8-24 review from the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval of the funding by the Board of Finance. And below that would be a proposed resolution.
Okay. Read the resolution, open it up for discussion, and then vote. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen recommend the purchase of the Raymond property and approximately 8.5-acre parcel of land located on Millstream Road and further, and refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 8-24 review. And further, in accordance with the Hebron Town Code, Chapter 42, Section 8, refer to the Board of Finance for approval of funding from the Land Acquisition Fund in the amount of $16,000, and be it further resolved to refer the purchase for consideration to a special town meeting to be scheduled for Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Community Room at the Douglas Library of Hebron, 2022 Main Street, Hebron, Connecticut. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Going across, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Resolution carries. Next would be the American Rescue Plan monies. Well, we've already talked, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item AB, American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds Approval Schedule, Special Town Meeting Approval, approving meeting call and appointing moderator and alternate moderator. So attached is the latest draft proposal of projects to be funded with the ARPA funds. The town attorney has ruled on project eligibility. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have reviewed the listing and have given tentative approval. The proposal was presented to a public hearing on May 12th. The selectmen should finalize the proposed project list to be submitted to special town meeting for approval. The town managers recommend the special town meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. at the Douglas Library Community Room, and that would be in person. And then there's a proposed motion.
Okay. So I'll read the motion and open it up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the final ARPA project list to be submitted to the special town meeting per the attached list dated May 19th, 2022. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? There have been prices added to a couple of the items. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. And now the resolution. Be it resolved that a special town meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. at the Douglas Library Community Room to submit the proposal for projects to be funded by the ARPA funds to the voters for approval. Be it further resolved that the board approve the meeting call as presented, and be it further resolved that Joseph Chris be appointed moderator and Kevin Connors be appointed alternate moderator. Hearing the resolution, any discussion? Hearing, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Resolution carries. Multitasking here, apologize. Our next would be the Cannabis Moratorium and potential next step?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Donna, you might have to mute Brian's microphone. I don't know if he's aware he's popping in and out of the meeting. So Cannabis Moratorium and potential next steps. Matthew Bordeaux, town planner, will be in attendance to provide the selectmen with information on the next steps required by the Board of Selectmen regarding the regulation or prohibition of cannabis establishments in Hebron. The town attorney has provided a response to the request regarding extension of the moratorium. The selectmen may wish to continue the discussion on whether to send this question to the referendum to gauge community sentiment or make a decision with, which would allow PZC to move ahead with establishing the appropriate regulations. So I have Matt with us here.
Hi, folks. The feedback from the town attorney was that the generally accepted standard for the length of a moratorium year. However, the current end date of that moratorium is in December 2022, which would bring us to approximately a year. So the idea of an extension is possible. However, it becomes somewhat risky territory because there's really no precedent for the length of a moratorium beyond a year. So what's the real risk to the town of Hebron? I think it's minimal as long as the town of Hebron shows that progress is being made toward a resolution to the issue. However, that's the generally accepted standard and the guidance from the town attorney. Now, if the board wished to bring this question to referendum and it was to be considered in the month of November, the existing moratorium, the way it stands now, expires in December. So that would give us somewhat limited time to prepare ourselves to make appropriate provisions for the regulation of cannabis establishments. However, I'm somewhat familiar with the topic, having worked on the issue and the preparation of regulations in the town of Colchester. I don't think it will be a very heavy lift for the town of Hebron just because of the fact that the commercial area is so limited. The rules or the regulations that can be considered within state law are somewhat limited. And quite frankly, once you start to consider what would be appropriate provisions, so you're probably talking about separation distances from sensitive areas or sensitive places. You're talking about hours of operation, you're talking about advertising, things like that. The footprint, I'll say, of places within the town of Hebron that would even be possible for a cannabis establishment to establish itself would be very limited. So I think that that's an exercise that the Planning and Zoning Commission and myself could go through without a great deal of labor. We probably would spend some time in advance, assuming the board made that decision to go to referendum. Alternatively, one thought that Mr. Tierney and I discussed briefly was to begin the exercise sooner than later, to consider what would be appropriate provisions and have the board weigh in on those rather than, you know, going to the length of having the entire town consider it. I think, you know, it's going to be difficult to get the feedback, well, to provide really what the town is looking for. You know, one thought was we provide or consider some outside consultation. I know that there's a lot of organizations that have provided some very good information related to the subject. Connecticut Conference of Municipalities has done some significant work along this line. I think Department of Economic and Community Development has spent some time doing it as well. So there's a fair amount of information out there. But just in terms of the response for your, for your consideration tonight, the feedback from the town attorney is that because there's really no precedent for the extension of moratorium, we would be entering somewhat risky territory. My personal opinion, it's very limited risky, limited risk. However, because the existing moratorium does expire in the month of December, just, you know, for, you know, a factual timeline, the board was to consider going to referendum in November. That would give us about, I would say, about 30 to 45 days to consider the appropriate regulation after that. So if you have any questions, I can try to help you out.
No, I think that's, that's, I think that's great. It gives us an idea. We would be able to between, you know, if we do, in fact, put it to the voters for their consideration, that would enable us to grab a couple or three dates that both sides of the issue could weigh in on. We would be able to get, I would hope, some sort of testimony, maybe from a couple of the towns, even if they were, you know, in Massachusetts or whatever, to find out what their experience has been, what their issues have been, what worked well and what didn't work well. And that way, I would hope that the, the voting public would then listen to all the facts and then come up with a, with a vote. And that way, they would be the ones directly responsible. And that way, they would be the ones directly responsible, one way or another, to this to this topic. We'll put it up for other input. Tiffany, Mark, Gail, Peter?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
On with understanding what Matthews just shared, with the intent then that if the referendum is in November, that it's combined with the general election. I'm not sure is that what we are thinking? Or is it a separate referendum altogether? I just, I think we need to consider that pretty carefully, given these are midterms coming up and we typically have a pretty high turnout.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, so it's decided by the Selectmen, but the vision that we had is we would attempt to put it on the November referendum when the elections are because of the turnout.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
I'm completely against having any retail marijuana sales in Hebron. Everybody I've talked to is completely against it. And that includes my SRO days. There's not one grandparent that I've talked to that wants marijuana sold in their town. So I feel confident if it goes to referendum, it's it's not going to pass. I would like to get this issue resolved. So I'm for going to referendum in November.
Okay, Gail or Peter? You're on mute, Gail. Sorry.
Got to get that more automatic. I'd rather have it go to referendum sooner rather than later and get this matter clarified.
I agree with you.
It should be up to the people in town, not just us on the Board of Selectmen.
So then you would be in favor of it being on the November?
Yes, I would, Dan, yes.
Okay, Peter?
I would support what's been proposed.
I'm sorry.
I didn't.
I would I would I would support what's been proposed, putting it on the referendum in November.
Okay, so hearing the feeling of the Board of Selectmen, I think that's that's the direction that we would like to go. You know, so we will try to set up two or three public information sessions. I would like, as I say, to get somebody, you know, a disinterested third party from, you know, maybe one of the towns that has had some experience. And I think we'd have to probably go to Massachusetts for this, only because it's so new in Connecticut to see what they say. I want the voter public to be informed. And hopefully, you know, AHM, some of these other organizations could also give their, you know, give their ideas and and try to move forward with this. So what's our next step on this then, Andy?
Well, you can take a vote and, you know, I don't know if you have to vote, but I would just, for practical reasons, take a vote tonight of the members present, vote to send this question to referendum. And we'll start working on, you know, possibly putting up a couple of public hearings prior to that and get CCM information like Matt suggested and go from there.
Okay. Well, then I guess the the motion would be that the potential next steps for the allowing or disallowing of cannabis in the town of Hebron will be put to the voters on the November ballot with a minimum of two public information sessions to be given to the voters of Hebron for their consideration to give them information on this topic. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All in favor? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, since I'm the one that kind of made the motion, aye. Thank you. Our next will be the Green Committee.
Yes.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So just for point of reference, item AD is how green, the Hebrew Green Committee, and the question is how green does Hebron want to be? So before we dive into this, I owe Chairman Hershey's online here. I owe her an apology because I left her a voicemail explaining to her how some of our meetings were getting extensive. And this could be probably queued down with a couple of meetings with myself and possibly a workshop versus in the Selectmen's meeting forum. So she was gracious enough to accept that, but I wanted to make sure she understood that we have no issues with the Green Committee, that it was all in the sake of trying to conduct our business within a couple of hours versus three plus hours a night of a Selectmen's meeting. So I had a conversation with her yesterday. I just wanted to clear the air and I appreciate her willingness to do so. But attached is a letter with some of their concerns, and they're working on the plan of conservation and development, sending comments back in. So I think they need to have some sort of dialogue with us, and she's willing to, you know, briefly talk a little bit tonight. But then we can set something up where I can meet with them and go over some things and part down a little bit and bring it back to the Selectmen for their guidance.
Okay, perfect. Caitlin?
I think she got issues.
There she is.
Hey, guys. So, yeah, as Andy mentioned, you know, we sent this letter for the last meeting. And I think what we're going to end up doing is working a little bit closer with Town Managers' Office. When we left the board last time, obviously, you know, it was really late for us too. So we were, I think, a little tired as well. By the time we got on, it was almost 10 o'clock. So I'm definitely going to keep this short tonight. But, you know, as as you know, we have a couple of concerns, we have a couple of recommendations as well. So I think what we're going to do is work through those concerns and recommendations with Andy's office. When we left you last time, we mentioned that we were going to, you know, come up with some solutions and try and, you know, talk through some of these items that we've mentioned in the past that we've kind of brushed under the rug. You know, I think collectively as a town. And we will probably be back to you within the next couple of meetings, I would imagine, after working a little bit closer with Andy. And then, you know, we'll come forth with some some good ideas.
Perfect. Great. Great. Does anybody have any questions of Caitlin?
Listening as well, because I know it was late for you guys. And you were very patient with that that letter, you know, getting read so late.
Yeah, and, you know, and, you know, I think everybody believes in, you know, a lot of the green initiatives and, and, you know, green sustainability. You know, we have that dubious responsibility of balancing what can be done realistically and, you know, within, you know, the constraints of personnel and, you know, dollars and cents. You know, the the, and I forgot what they call it, the little tippy monies. That was a nice, you know, gift that we're going to be getting, that you will be, you know, moved on the nippers.
Yeah, for nips.
And I remember, you know, it's it's utterly incredible, the amount of nipper's you find along the roads. It's sad, you know, but but at any rate. So I think I think we are all on the same page, just trying to figure out how to get there. You know? So you and I have talked about down at the transfer station. Did you want to mention quickly how the the exchange project is going down at the recycling center?
Are you talking about the transfer station and recycling center in general, or the swap shack or?
The swap shack.
The swap shack itself, just to update the board. As you guys know, we've been working on that project for a couple of years. We went through the board, I think, probably two years ago to get that approved. And it has been going swimmingly. Knock on wood. We really have had great feedback. People have brought some really awesome items, some expensive things down there, like that people were going to throw out. So if you have not been, please visit us Sundays, 10 to 2. We're starting out with volunteers and members sitting there just to kind of get the education and the flow going. And then the idea is that eventually it will be self sustaining and hopefully open, you know, all weekend or maybe even open all the time that the transfer station is open. But it's, I mean, we really have been so pleasantly surprised with how wonderful we've been received down there and some of the stuff that we're getting. It's pretty awesome. So we also are looking for volunteers. So if anyone wants to stop down there, you get first dibs on. Down there for the day, you get first dibs on whatever gets put into the shack.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody have any questions of Caitlin? Any questions? That's great. I'm glad I'm glad we're getting, you know, we're getting some communications and keep this thing going well. So thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, guys. And we look forward to working with you on this how green does Hebron want to be question. You know, it's really just kind of come to the forefront recently again because of the P O C D. Obviously, you guys have done a lot of work already. We know that. We've been working with you for years. And we love working with you and the work that you guys have done. But we're ready to start stretching those muscles a little more. And hopefully throughout this conversation and as we work with the Town Manager's Office, we can, you know, make sure that we are stretching those muscles and and making Hebron as green as we possibly can while still being fiscally responsible, of course. So we look forward to having that conversation with you further.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Andy?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item 9A. This is probably, at least in my mind, the most important thing on the agenda tonight because it's kind of a new item. And hopefully, everybody had a chance to read their packets. There's quite a bit of backup information that brings us to this request. So I'll just I'll hit on it. And then if there's any questions, I also have our Public Works Director, Kevin Kelly, on board and myself. So without further ado, we're looking to approve a lease. It'll be a lease purchase, but we'd have to lease. And we're also looking for a bid waiver for acquisition of a new roll-off truck. So attached is a memo from Elaine Griffin, Finance Director, and Kevin Kelly, Public Works Director, regarding the emergency acquisition of a new roll-off truck. This is a critical piece of equipment. The proposal is to lease the truck short term and then purchase. This truck has been funded in the CIP budget, but funding will fall short due to the need to lease temporarily. At this time, the town manager is recommending the Selectmen approve the lease and a bid waiver request. At the time of purchase, a supplemental appropriation will be requested. And then there's a proposed motion. So I'll just give an overview quickly. So the town of Hebron owns its own roll-off truck. And I think the present one's right around a 96 or something. I can get more information on that. But in a nutshell, we haul approximately 15 containers a week. So the dumps open Saturday, or the transfer stations open Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday. So we haul on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays to take the stuff out, to recycle it, get rid of it. MSW, bulky waste, things of that nature. That that adds up to about 15 cans a week, or roughly 15, 59 cans a month. Cans being, you know, containers. The truck we have is tired and it's really close to letting us down where we would have to hire somebody to come in. To hire somebody to come in, we're going to spend about $250 a can to have them haul our garbage. That's going to add up really, really fast. The other issue that we're faced with is there's not a lot of trucks readily available. If we were to order one, we're talking anywheres from six to 12 to 18 to 24 months. And we have some letters from truck builders stating that. Also, we located this truck out of pure luck. It's out in Cleveland, Ohio. It's pretty much exactly what we would expect out. But the company that we're dealing with right now is not an authorized Kenworth dealer. So they they buy the trucks and they build them. But because they're not an authorized Kenworth dealer, they can't just sell them because they'd be competing with actual Kenworth dealerships. So that being said, they can, they're allowed to lease them for six months. And then we will be able to purchase the truck. If the town were to move forward with this, we would lease this truck for six months. 25% of that lease money would go towards the purchase of the truck. And then we would, at the time of that, purchase the truck. And I believe we'd be looking for a supplemental appropriation of about $15,545. So we just saw this with the police cruiser. There's no availability. You see it in your business, this generator's a year, two years out. There's just, there's no truck. So we're kind of in dire straits. We were lucky to find this and put this deal together. So I think knowing what the cost would be if this truck were to fail us, which we've had it diagnosed by professionals, we've had the motor scoped, and it's it's really tired and it's not going to make it. So we could have a turnaround time of this truck within a month, once it's all approved and paperwork signed. So as it states, the town manager is recommending that the Board of Selectmen approve the lease and the bid waiver at this time. This truck was slated to be replaced anyways. As it stated, this would have been replaced in the next fiscal year, which is July 2022. So we're looking to do it a little bit sooner. And this isn't a, this isn't a derogatory statement towards anybody, but that's why when we put these things into the CIP plan to be replaced, we've been pushing it out and pushing it out to try to save money. This is where one of the instances where now we're going to have to pay a little bit more money than we normally would have because we didn't do it when we should have. Now we're, you know, might throw some money at it. The other thing is, is we tried to look for another motor to fix this truck and wait for the appropriate time. That that also is unavailable. We couldn't either get parts or a replacement motor. We've we've searched and we didn't have any luck with that as well.
Anybody have any questions of Andy or Kevin?
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, we've been apprised of this by, from Andy and Kevin in the past. We need to do it, and I think we're extremely fortunate to have this opportunity to buy this truck. And I think we need to go ahead with it.
Okay, anyone else? I will say, I do know it's been on CIP for a couple of years and it kept getting pushed out. And, you know, I just did the math, 15 loads at, what, $250 a load is $37.50 a week. So economically, it makes sense to get this lease, to get it rolling. I'll read the motion. We'll open it up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the six-month lease for a Kenworth roll-off truck through premier truck sales and rental and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the lease paperwork. Further, that a bid waiver be approved in accordance with the town of Hebron purchasing policy. So any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the proposed motion signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Peter just boarded his plane, so as a result, he is offline. So get that truck rolling before somebody else does. Thank you for coming on, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next would be our communications with the Hebron community.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, it was brought up at a previous Board of Selectmen's meeting. So item 9B, communications with Hebron, communications. So item 9B, communications with Hebron, communications with the Hebron community. The selectmen have requested there be a discussion on how to improve communications with the Hebron community. The scope is general communication and more specifically budget related information and communications. And we thought it'd be appropriate that we list all the things that we're doing now. So currently, the avenues of communication utilized by the town include, and they're listed there for everybody to see. I'm not sure if you want me to read them, but I can.
No, that's fine.
So that's what, that's what we presently do. And I just think, as you heard Terry McManus say earlier, and we put a lot of work into the budget and the documents. And then we have a lot of meetings with, night meetings with boards, commissions and staff. And we have very little participation during that process. And then as is also noted, out of about 7,000, just under 400 voters eligible to vote, we had like 1,043 people, I believe, vote. So a lot of the, a lot of low turnout and a lot of the towns not engaged. So we're trying to see if we can do things better, more, more streamlined. If they're not going to get involved, maybe we can, you know, do something that's more appropriate to get the word out versus having all those meetings at night, going through, you know, the budgets, the schools present their budget, the RAM presents their budget. And it's detailed, we can detail it as much as you want. But I just, I'm not sure we're, we're getting the engagement that we're looking for. And it's, we're putting a lot of hours in every year to do that. So maybe it's time to look at that.
Questions, comments from people? Go ahead, Tiffany.
If I might, please bear with me, my voice is pretty low right now. But I was able to do some thinking about this while I was pretty ill this past week. And the one thing I'd like to suggest, Andy, that we think about. So in my line of work, social media is really a two to three person job. I mean, especially for an institution like mine, digital managers, that kind of thing. And appreciating that we don't have that here. It seems to me, a lot of where I hear people saying that they don't know what's going on, particularly when we were even having the cannabis discussions during the regular meeting, I see those conversations happening on social media. I think we may want to think about how we're targeting our social media, how often we're using the Town of Hebron page. Are we communicating effectively and concisely? Are we posting all of this information and all of the Facebook pages that the Town of Hebron is in on? Because there's quite a few that's listed here. And there's also the Hebron C T community page that gets a lot of action. And so I think one observation I have is that I think we can be more efficient with our social media. I haven't, excuse me, I haven't had a lot of time to dive into this, given that it's commencement this weekend and I've been under the weather. But it's certainly a separate conversation I can have with you and your team, perhaps to talk about ways that we can enhance what we're doing on social media. Because I do think there's an audience for all of these, including Hebron Views in the River East. Majority of people in my age group and younger, and even a little bit older are all on social media. And so I think perhaps we need to think about how we can be more present there. So that's just a general observation that you can kind of sit with. Being that this is in line, in my line of work, I'm happy to help. I just haven't had, I've had a little bit of a brain fog lately. But anyway, those are some of my thoughts initially.
Okay. Yeah, and I would, I think it'd be great if you could kind of pass on some of your expertise in that. I think that would be fantastic.
Sure, happy to.
I know I myself, I don't do social media. I just, I don't have the time. I know.
And there are tools, actually. And some have a small fee, but some might be free where you can schedule posts in advance, right? So I think the idea is to be, you know, efficient and to be out there fully on social media. But let's find ways so it's not an additional action item we're adding on someone's daily agenda. Because as I've said, in my line of work, social and digital media are full time job descriptions for people. And we don't have that capacity here. But, excuse me, if it's at all helpful, you know, I'm happy to maybe continue this offline and bring back kind of a different plan or perspective once I'm through a couple of commencements. It's, you know, if the rest of the board is comfortable with that, you know, this is what I do. So I'm happy to do that, you know, if Andy, if you and your team, you know, would be willing to do that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm open, Mr. Chairman, I may, I'm open, I'm open to that. We just, you know, I've been going to trainings on this and Tiffany's right. But the social media pages that the town's not the owner of could be a double edged sword. We've been trained by town attorneys to be careful. Of course, we post everything on our webpage, but I'm not sure everybody follows it. I'm pretty sure they don't follow the town webpage. But there's other popular ones in town that Tiffany mentioned that we don't run. So we'd have to structure it in a way that it would just be informational only. We wouldn't be able to debate that. I see a lot of debates go on on town issues that we're not involved in. And it sometimes takes a turn that you would not want it to take. So I'm sure, like Tiffany said, if it's structured properly, we, we have a thought out plan and let it be known that we're, we're supplying information. But it's not an area of dialogue, of back and forth, at least with the, the town office itself, that I think she's onto something.
That's, that's right, Andy. I, I think unfortunately with social media, my institution goes through this. I mean, you put something out there, there's going to be some kind of return, right? Because it's organic and because it's people expressing their viewpoints. However, I don't see that we would run into trouble by just posting factually, here's a link to the Board of Selectmen's agenda, public comment, welcome. We're having our first budget hearing tonight. Here's who present, who's presenting, public comment, welcome. And then you kind of have to let the comments roll as they may unless they veer into somewhere where we may feel the need to correct them. But all of that is done in balance, right? As part of a communication strategy, a broader strategy. So I think that there's more we could do in that arena. And if, if you could give me, Andy, until mid-June to get through a few other work things, I'd love to sit down and kind of, you know, talk about different ways we can utilize social media. Because I do think there's an opening there for us to be strategic and to be clarifying.
Okay.
Okay, good conversation. Anybody have anything else? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Next up is 9C, I believe, Ron?
Yes, the job description.
And that would be approval of the job description for the assessor. Attaches a proposed job description for the assessor's position. Unfortunately, Deb Gernhardt, our longtime assessor, has decided to call it quits. And she gave us a notice and she's given us until mid-August before her departure dates. So I think it's a very important position in the Town of Hebron. That should remain full time. So we want to move forward with this position as it's listed in the packet here tonight.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the job description for the assessor as presented. Open it up for discussion. Reading it, it seemed pretty complete. So anybody have any, any discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Okay, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richman, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next would be the memorandum of understanding. This is concerning the access to vehicle related information in the N C I C system. So Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is to approve an M O U concerning access to the vehicle related information in the N C I C system for the license plate reader project. So as you know, we've approved the purchase of a new police vehicle. And also we're looking to purchase a plate reader. Marlboro has just recently done that, another small town that abuts us. We enjoy right now a license plate reader because it's on our resident trooper's car. I've been informed by Bryce that the troop is looking to take that away because he is a resident trooper specific to Hebron. They want that to be moved around within their jurisdiction with the towns and shared. So that will be going away from us. So while we were fortunate enough to ascertain a new police vehicle, we're also looking to add this piece of arsenal to our police force. So in doing so, you have to have an agreement regarding the information. So attaches a memorandum of understanding between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the Town of Hebron's Police Department concerning access to vehicle related information in the N C I C system for the license plate reader project. This agreement has been reviewed by the town attorney and should be approved to allow the town to implement new technology of the license plate reader. Then there's a proposed motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then open it up. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the Town of Hebron Police Department concerning access to vehicle related information in the N C I C system for the license plate reader project and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the agreement on behalf of the Town of Hebron. Hearing the motion, any questions, any comments? Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next will be the draft agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next scheduled Board of Selectmen will be, believe it or not, we're already going to be into June. It would be June 2nd.
So again, anybody has any things to add or whatever? Get it into the town staff so that that can be taken care of. With that, is there any other new business? Hearing none, our next item would be the consent agenda. And these are items that are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. We have A, the April 21st, 2022 regular meeting, and the May 5th, 2022 regular meeting. And then B, we have the tax refund as listed.
Chairman Larson, it's, it's Donna. We do not have those, we do not have those minutes. We'll only be voting on the tax refund and we'll be moving out minutes to the next meeting.
Oh, perfect. Okay, I thought maybe I'd missed something, but, which sometimes I do. So really, we just have the tax refund as listed. So all in favor of the tax refund, please signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Excuse me. Our next thing would be the liaison reports. And Gail?
Okay, as we didn't have these at the last meeting, I have a few things to add this evening. The Senior Center Commission on Aging. We did have a meeting, what was that, 10 days ago? And a big topic of interest is programs on aging and dementia to benefit the community. So it's not just dementia that these programs are going to, but as our towns age, these programs will be to assist aging people as they stay in the home to be able to navigate their own community. Winter heating assistance applications are still being taken. Renters rebate is open for applicants also. So anybody that would like to find out about those programs should call the Senior Center. Programming at the Senior Center is going well and the exercise room is being utilized heavily. Douglas Library. The Connecticut Historical Society presented a program on remembering G. Fox. I've seen that program, it is great. As I don't come from Connecticut, it's a very, very interesting one. The Teen Advisory Group met May 10th and they'll meet again on May 24th. At the night of, we might have mentioned this somewheres at our last meeting, but at the night of giving at the Lines Club, the library was presented with a donation. And the library is so grateful for that every year. For the Hebron Board of Ed, I'm sure you all saw the signs out in front of the schools two weeks ago. Teacher Appreciation Week. And the signs were out there to remind everyone how great our teachers are. And the Board of Education thanked the teachers by preparing a breakfast for all the staff for a couple of mornings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mark?
I have nothing I want to know to report.
Okay, Tiffany?
I just have one small update. On the open space regular meeting has been canceled for June. But the committee will be hosting a booth at Hebron Day on June 18th from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. If interested members of the public would like to stop by and talk about open space. Thank you.
Okay. With me, the Fire Department, the corporation meeting was canceled due to personal reasons. That's all I know. So they did not meet. Peters House, they're moving along, you know, doing stuff inside and getting that place, I guess, on June 18th. That will be open so people can go through the, the structure. And I believe, oh God, is it code that's putting on a thing with it? I'm trying to remember now. But so that's, that's going to be during the Juneteenth day as well as the Hebron Day. Other than that, one of the things I did notice that I think warrants bringing it up is A H M is having a Celtic musical event. And I want to say it's June 17th, if I'm not mistaken. And they're trying to sell tickets for that. Just one of their many ways of raising money. And I've heard on the radio, and I'm not sure if it's coming up this weekend or not, where they're trying to raise funds at a car wash for Ram Graduation Day. And I'm, hopefully I'm not a week late on that. Other than that, that's all I have. So opening it back up to our public, or Andy, did you have anything for W P C A?
I do, and it's not good news. So it's like anything else with this COVID backlash. So Holzner Construction is the company that's chosen to do the construction work on the upgrades to the pump stations. They're out of standstill. The, they can't get the concrete products that they need from United Concrete. They're, they're being manufactured and we, there's, we're not going to get them at least, we're being told for another month or two. So once they get them, that, then that's when I have to put all the components inside of that actually makes these pump stations work. So they can't do anything until they get that stuff. Also, the generators are on back order, as you well know with your business stand. So that project is going to run longer than normal due to, like everything else in the world, due to COVID. It's just a huge backup on supply.
Are the, at least the costs going to be maintained or we don't know that either?
Well, they they bid it and we signed the contract. The one thing they're already looking for is an extension on the contract and you know, and it would do it as a clause in the contract. It says, you know, due to unforeseen circumstance, which I think this would fall under. But I I did not sign off. I said, it's too soon in the project and until you have a concrete schedule of completion, I don't think we're, it's not that we won't work with you, but let's get a little further down the road with the project. Let's do everything we can to get it done. Then we'll see where we are. So there might be some additional costs.
Okay, I do know it's it's ridiculous across the board. You know, the, the, it just, it just defies any kind of logic. The amount of time it takes sometimes to get some of this stuff in.
Well, while, while we're on the subject, and it's a long liaison. So the state of Connecticut DOT opened up their bids for the VIP and the paving costs. So due to the rising oil and escalation, they're even charging money to make the asphalt because of all the equipment in the quarries to make it, let alone the actual product that goes in to make the asphalt. So asphalt's up to almost a hundred dollars a ton. And also all the stuff that Kevin Kelly was bidding out and looking to do is going to cost more money because of the fuel escalation. It's just, I think we're all seeing it even in our own personal vehicles. I just want to make that aware that the amount of paving he wanted to get done is going to be reduced because the amount of money is not going to go as far due to the escalation with the cost with the fuel.
On that cherry note, people try to stay cool this weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Open it up. It's going to be in the nineties. It's like, come on, fifties today, nineties weekend. Okay, our next section will be our public comment again. Do we have anyone for public comment? Type into the chat box.
Nothing here at this time.
Okay, well, thank you. With that, Gail?
Gail Richmond is very happy to say, I make a motion that we adjourn at eight fourteen.
Woo.
Thank you. I hope you're feeling better than me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try.
Well, you know, hopefully, nothing worse than being sick.
That's true. Everyone have a good night. Take care.
Okay.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.